Recording in progress.
Seven o'clock, we're gonna get started with the city council. At this time, I'd like to call the city council to order. Let's start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
Councilmember Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Banks.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky is absent. And councilmember Cummings.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us, looking for a motion. Nancy?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, looking for a second? Brendan?
I second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. First item is consent agenda. I'll read that into the record at this time. Approval of the minutes for, from the following meetings for city council regular work session on December 6, 2022, and a work session from that same date. Approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in the city clerk's office. Adoption of a resolution accepting donations. Approval of the following commission's reappointments. I forgot to pre-read these. Sh- Shahrizad?
Chaz.
Chaz, okay. Ahmed for the Parks and Recs Commission, that's the at-large position. Mary Cameron for the Employee Review Board. Bryce Cooper for the Parks and Recreation Commission. James Brown for the Planning Commission. Harley Heigl for the Planning Commission. Candace Othout for the Blue Line Extension Business Advisory Council. Adoption of a resolution accepting public representative for the West Metro Fire Rescue Districts- District. And then acknowledgement of receipt of law enforcement support officer programs, community notification letter, and then adoption of a resolution approving the 2022 delegated contract process agreement for the local public agencies. Looking for a motion on that. Go ahead, Brendan.
I think a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
All right, David?
I second that.
Thank you. All members in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? All right, motion carries. Do we have anybody here wishing to speak during open forum? Anybody wishing to speak at this time? Just a reminder, this is a time where you can speak to the public and the council at the same time. Since nobody's approaching, we will skip by open forum. Move on to the regular agenda. First item on the regular agenda is the disbursements of $25,000 or greater. I will read those into the record as soon as I get to that page. Health Partners Inc. for December health insurance premiums for $116,488. Center for Energy Environment for Home Improvement Loans and Grant Programs for $66,264. $64. Golden Valley Joint Water Commission for the Dog Park Tree Removals and the EAB Tree Removals, $223,151. NIX Tree Service for October Water Costs, $79,750. Pedersen Companies Inc., Central Core Stormwater Project Number Five for $127,913. UHL Co. for Community Center Air Handling Replacement for Project Number One, $26,433. Abdo Financial Solutions for Financial Management Services Long Term Plan and Utility Rate Study for $30,408. Berwald Roofing Company for New Public Safety Building, the Police Department for $90,746. Cedar Ridge Landscaping for the Police Department for $148,888. George F. Cook Construction Police Station for $72,902. Carl's Anderson Construction for Police Station, $34,123. Top Lit Contract Glazing for Police Department, $37,227. Sigler Inc. for Generator for South Sewage Lift Station, $78,315. Minpara for Employee City, Employee and City Required Contribution for Pay Date 12/9/22 for $62,138. Mission Square Retirement for Contributions for Employee RHS Accounts for Pay Date 12/9/2022 for $98,163. Total disbursements of $1,292,915 and 28 cents. Questions on this? I have one on NIX.
I think. For the tree service?
Yeah, water costs. Is that a cut and paste there?
Yes.
We'll go with a cut and paste there. We're gonna assume that they cut down trees.
Actually, if you read the Joint Water Commission one, that's the work NIX did.
They got flip flopped.
So you look at the comments?
Oh, okay.
Joint Water Commission?
Sure, sure.
So there was a clerical error there.
Oh, I missed the other side of it. Sorry. Thank you.
Good catch.
All right, we'll fix that for the record. Looking for a motion unless there's any other questions. I forgot to ask our other questions. Okay, we're good. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditures over $25,000 as read.
Thanks, Therese. Go ahead, Olga.
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. Next, the council will consider a second reading of the ordinance amending the Unified Development Code, the UDC, regarding motor vehicle sales. We have our community director, Community Development Director John Satter here to address the council. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. So as the mayor mentioned, this is the second reading and adoption of a proposed text amendment. And also, there would be a resolution for summary publication of the ordinance. So this has to do with properties located between Lombardi Lane and basically a point about 370 feet north of it on the east side of Lakeland Avenue, which is the Botino Boulevard front and road. There are two existing motor vehicle sales businesses in this area. Currently, they are legally non-conforming because the text of the zoning text basically does not allow motor vehicle sales in this particular section of the city. The proposed text amendment would change that to add the area encompassing these two properties as an area where motor vehicle sales are in fact a permitted use, similar to some other corridors in the city. So the text amendment is on yellow in the bottom half of the screen, and the blue arrow at the top half of the screen is pointing to the four parcels that would potentially be impacted by this change to allow motor vehicle sales. Going back to the aerial photo, because they're non-conforming uses, they currently can't expand their motor vehicle sales operations. With this text amendment, they would be able to expand on those sites. The one exception right now is that Jack's has a parcel at 6043 Florida. They would need to combine that lot with their lot at 6030 Lakeland into a single parcel so that they could use the entire site that they have for motor vehicle sales, if they ever were to choose to do that. So with that, the planning commission did recommend approval, and we did not receive any comments from the public. And the city council did approve first reading on December 6. And so tonight, again, we're asking for two actions. One is to approve second reading and adoption of the ordinance, amending the code, and then a resolution approving summary publication of the ordinance.
All right, any questions for John on this? Okay. Is there anybody here from the business today? Do you know?
I do not see the Pearson's.
Okay.
I'm not aware of anyone else.
All right. With that, looking for a motion? Go ahead, Nancy.
I'll make a motion to adopt the following ordinance for revising Chapter Five of the Crystal City Code regarding location of allowed vehicle sales.
All right, looking for a second, Olga?
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Did you want to do the second one, Brendan?
Yeah.
I'm just picking on you. It's the last chance I got.
All right. Make sure I read it right. I'll make a motion for the resolution approving summary language for publication of ordinance number 2022-08.
All right, Olga?
I'll second that out.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have council considering a resolution authorizing the purchase of a replacement pickup for the Street Department. Public Works Director Mark Ray is here to address the council. Welcome, Mark.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Warm, heating warmer. There we go. Replacement pickup truck, pretty straightforward. There's an echo that's in my head, probably. $25,000 or $75,000 in the budget replacing 307 is just a pretty boring pickup truck. We are replacing a little bit earlier than we normally would because we want it to be used for seasonal use in the summers. We're trying to get a few years out of it, or it'll only be driven during the summer, whether it be by recreation staff or by our summer seasonal staff. Two quotes are obtained. It'll be a one-for-one replacement. Again, it'll roll down in our fleet and another truck will be sold off at auction. So that's the net effect. Usually what we do is we have our older trucks or what seasonals have, just in case they crash into stuff. Doesn't happen very often, and generally, it's trees in the parks. So the item before you is a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the replacement of a pickup truck.
All right. John, go ahead.
The last vehicle you bought?
Yep.
You bought it from a, did you buy it from the same dealer?
Same one, correct. Yep.
So it's, you're-
It's the only place we can get trucks right now. There is a rumor that the state contract will have pickups starting in February of 2023.
Twenty-three.
I'd like to tell you I'm holding my breath, but I'm not.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Is this the current truck?
That is the current truck.
My truck. But I just wanted to ask, you said it's the only dealer. How soon are you looking at pickup, or is there one ready now?
So that's the kick, right? Is we're basically buying one off the lot. Like, you go and buy one, because that's the only way we can get them right now.
Okay.
So, yeah. Weird times.
It is.
Yes. One last question.
Go ahead, John.
And then the price, is that a market?
Yeah, it's, we, I think we got a little bit of a reduction because we're a government agency, but it's literally like if you walked in there and bought a truck.
That's actually cheaper.
Good news.
Yeah, that's, that's about, you're going with the 55, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, most trucks are averaging about $65,000.
All right. Looking for a motion?
I approve the, I approve the purchase of a replacement Streets pickup truck.
All right. Brendan?
Second that.
All right, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries.
Mayor, is your goal to have Brendan like-
You know, a little more than normal, yeah, that'd be great.
All right, I'll try to hold off a little bit.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, Mark's here to address the council for a resolution authorizing a contract for solar panel install on the roof of the police department.
That is basically the item, right there. As part of the $4 million we got from the state, we did do some, a variety of things. Solar panels on the roof is one of them. So the state actually solicited the bids for us. We got three RFPs. There was a review panel. Myself, Wool, and some other individuals were on the review panel. We scored them all. Solar pods scored the highest. The city will actually own the system. And then additionally, we met with them to talk about the removal of the existing solar panels, the remaining ones on City Hall. Because due to electrical safety rules, you can't have two different systems because as short and long as you might electrocute somebody, which would be very bad. So that's why they have to be one, that's a connected system. So I've learned a lot about solar in the last month and a half. If you have questions, we can absolutely go into it. Year one cost, right there, so that includes installations, about $109,330. The ongoing cost is $2,000 per year for maintenance for 10 years. And that number doesn't inflate. That's just $2,000 a year for 10 years. So with that, any questions?
Yeah, what does the revenue look like?
So I did not crunch, this is buried in here. So the, basically, the way this one, so before we purchased power and there was this whole trade deal with this third party, because we own this system, it basically just reduces our consumption. And... I want to, Trevor, how about the size of this was? I would have to get back to you on exactly what the expected revenue was. I know it's in here somewhere.
I guess maybe I should ask a better question. Are we gonna be able to put more back into our usage than on the old system? Because the old system was, we stopped talking about it because it was so meaningless. Is this one gonna be similar in terms of production?
What I've learned is the system we originally put in was notoriously bad. The vendor's out of business. You can't buy those panels anymore. To be frank, actually, we've learned is our community, or the community center and the pool now are not up to electrical code anymore. Whereas these ones, they're a little more established, and they have a better reputation. They've been around longer. So I think what we're gonna generate here is, quite frankly, not a lot of power. We're trying to meet the state requirements. There is the option with this one to expand the systems. That could be something we explore in the future. So I don't know how much this one's gonna move the sundial, if you will. But it is, it is doing something. Does that answer your question?
I think you said it was better.
It's better. This one has a more proven track record, whereas when that one, the old one came out, I think we, it was installed right when it came out. It had no proven track record, and as we've learned-
We don't have any indemnification issues with this group?
No, there's-
Because there was for the last group. We had to make sure that we wouldn't get sued, and I asked the question, why would we get sued?
So because this one's not that weird PPA, as it's called, we just straight up own it. It's a much cleaner relationship with the installer. Plus, we have them on the hook for 10 years.
As in like warranty?
Warranty work. But if it doesn't work, they own it, or they don't own it, we own it, but we still have their number. Whereas the previous one, there was, the company was bought and sold, I think, once or twice. And so we didn't have consistent contacts either.
Are, okay, good. That's another plus. Shoveling. Are we shoveling these like the last one?
We are not shoveling them.
All right.
Oh, we're getting into it now, we are.
Yeah, we are.
These are bifacial. Which, what they mean is, so a solar panel, it can actually take power from either side. And so because it can collect power from the back, it does warm it up and actually helps with the melting. They will tell you they do not want you touching the panels because you risk scraping them and damaging them.
Okay, that's what they said last time, too. No touching.
Right.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Mark, forgive me if I missed it here, but is there life expectancy on these?
I'm sure it is in there, and I-
I didn't see it.
Do not know off the top of my head.
So the other ones had inductor costs like every five years. It was useful life of five years. Are we gonna have that big one at five years?
So I would go back to, in talking with this, with the vendor and his experience, his inverters have lasted a lot longer than five years. Because that was one of the comments we had about our experience with solar and like, hey, okay, the panel's there, but there's some other stuff that doesn't work. And he's like, yeah, we don't do this. So there's a higher confidence level, and actually demonstrated history with this product.
So I'm assuming the panels are completely different technology?
Oh, it's, yeah.
Is that the semiconductor type, where they have that stuff in there?
I'm, yeah, I'm sure everything is different, not only from the panel guts, but the backend stuff that supports it.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of interesting because they said we're using the same technology as they had in the 70s, and the technology in the panels is gonna remain the same. And I think it was same year, they said, there was all kinds of improvements in panels. I'm like, wow, that's really interesting. So I'm just, I'm glad we're a little-
We did not have the most positive relationship with that vendor.
Yeah.
So we're excited, moving in a different direction.
Yeah, me too. Me too. All right, those were my main concerns. Anybody have any other questions? Seeing none, looking for a motion from Brendan or Olga?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the solar panel construction on the City Hall campus.
Thank you. Looking for a second?
I second that.
All right, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. If you're watching this and not understanding what's going on, we have two council members where this is their last, their last meeting, and it's Brendan and Olga, so that's what's going on here.
That's a good lead-in to your next agenda item.
Huh. Is that me? All right. Next item is the council considering a resolution commending council member Brendan Banks for his service.
I'll let you take over, but it's an honor to have a resolution to commend Councilmember Banks for his years of service on the Crystal City Council. And I'll take, but the mayor, if you'd like to read it and present it.
Let's see if I have it in blue. You're laughing at me. Five, five. It's better for you if I find the blue. Trust me. All right, I'll read that into the record. This is a resolution commending council member Brendan Banks. Whereas Brendan Banks has served the city of Crystal, served as Crystal City Council Member, Ward II since January 2019. And whereas during his council tenure, he has served as the city council liaison to the Planning Commission and West Metro Fire Rescue District Board, and president and vice president, and treasurer of the Economic Development Authority. And whereas council member Banks was a major advocate for our new police station facility. And whereas council member Banks initiated the fourth of the city council's priorities, and that priority is for Crystal to be a welcoming and inclusive community. And whereas council member Banks was instrumental in developing the language establishing and the purpose for the Inclusion and Diversity Commission. And whereas council member Banks has provided model service and leadership and support of the city's mission to improve and promote the quality of life for all Crystal citizens and provide municipal services in a cost-effective, innovative, and professional manner. Now therefore, may it be resolved by the, the Crystal City Council that the city council offers a sincerest thanks to council member Banks for his service and leadership. As a city, Crystal City Council Member representing Ward II, he has made the Crystal community a better place to live, work, and play. Congratulations. Do I have a plaque for you?
What, no photo? Where's the?
We took photos of the whole.
We can take a picture after.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
With everybody.
That sounds, that sounds like a great idea.
We just need a, we just need a motion.
Oh, yeah, we gotta pass this guy. All right, can I get a motion for that?
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
All right, thank you. Looking for a second? You can't do this one. Nancy?
I second, heartily.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. Next, we have a resolution commending council member Olga Parsons. Resolution commending Olga Parsons, whereas Olga Parsons has served as Crystal City Council Member, Section Two, since January 2015. And whereas during her tenure, she has served as Mayor Pro Tem, the city council liaison for the Environmental Quality, Parks and Recs, and Planning Commission, and president and vice president of the Economic Development Authority. And whereas council member Parsons was instrumental in pursuing the plain language in city communication and formation of the City Code Review Task Force to review and update and simplify the city code. And whereas city council member Parsons enthusiastically supported the renovation of Welcome Park, including the closure of Welcome Avenue between 46th and 47th Avenue through the center of the park. And whereas council member Parsons also served as city's alternate on the Blue Line Extension Corridor Management Committee. And whereas council member Parsons has provided exemplary service and guidance in support of the city's mission to improve and promote the quality of life for all citizens and provided municipal support in cost-effective, innovative, and professional manner. Therefore, now be resolved by the city of Crystal, or the city council, excuse me, that the city council offers its sincerest gratitude to the council, council member Parsons for her service and leadership. As the Crystal City Council Membership representing Section Two, she has made the Crystal community a better place to live, work, and play. Congratulations, Olga. Brendan?
Oh, yeah, they won't do the motion first?
Sure.
All right. I make a motion through the resolution commending council member Parsons.
All right, looking for a second? John?
I second the motion.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. All right, before we jump to announcements, I'm just gonna kind of open it up for comments if you guys want to make any comments about these two who are leaving us.
Well, it's gonna be a big change. I'll tell you that much. I mean, it's definitely been, we've had some interesting discussions. We've, you know, agreed on things, we've disagreed on things, we've talked privately, sometimes very loudly, and sometimes, you know, got a better understanding of each other. And I think overall, we've made some great strides with this particular council. And very appreciative of both of them, having been on this council, and I've learned a lot from them.
All right. Nancy?
Well, having known Olga prior to Brendan, I'll start with Olga. It was an honor, I think, when you started, you were, started a year before I ran, but I got to know you through Park and Rack and some other activities. And it's just been an honor to work with you and see your vision, your passion for the city, with your family, and getting to know everybody. Thank you so much for all you've done, Olga. It's just been an honor to serve with you. And enjoy, I look forward to having steak silver at Crystal Cafe. Steak and eggs, right? So thanks so much again. Just very honored and so proud of everything that you've done. Thank you. And Brendan, so I met you when you were running, and I helped introduce you to some neighbors. And just seeing how you resonated with people right off the bat, it was just an honor to help you run and get elected and serve with you. And the pictures of your kids when you were running, and your son, was it Brayden who was mayor?
Yes.
Pro Tem.
Mayor Pro Tem.
For a day.
Yes, for a day.
No, not Pro Tem.
He was mayor for a day.
He was mayor for a day from that essay contest, so. But just the, in the short term that you've been with us, the amazing things that you've done. So proud of you, too. Thank you.
Olga, I want to say a few things about you. You've been around for just a little bit longer than Brendan. And it was in a time where there was profound change in Crystal during your first term. It was fun to, it was fun to see some initiatives that actually took hold. And a lot of things in Crystal calmed down. You have a calming demeanor, your thoughtfulness on some of these more hot topics. Despite what you might be thinking and feeling inside, you really did present a calm for, a great example for us to follow. I just want to kind of pay honor where I think it's due, and that, that, to me, is something that I really appreciated. It's one of those things that we go through when we have disagreements. Sometimes we all end up after the disagreements voting together. Sometimes we don't, and that's okay. But we have, we have great discord, and I think you were a big part of what that was and why it changed from what it was to what it has become. So I think that's really the biggest thing I love about you being on the council. You and I share a lot of, we shared a lot of similar votes, more than anyone. So I appreciated that, too. But, you know, it's, it's, you did, we did have different votes on many issues, which, you know, I'm glad we did. You know, it just really indicates an independent mind. I appreciate that as well. Thank you for your commitment to the city of Crystal, for your willingness to serve for that many years, and to come back into this arena again for- and to come back into this arena again for the second time. You were also part of, part of the, uh, Crystal Baby Boom, where we had three council members have babies. So that's, that's something that's very, I think, unique to have a group of people in this community in, in this council, uh, still very, very early in their raising of their children. Which takes, I think, even more commitment, especially at that, that young age. So, uh, I think that deserves a lot of kudos as well. So thank you. Brendan? You know, you are, to me, you are not only, uh, a, a voice that, you know, you always say it, you build bridges. And I don't know if I liked that so much all the time because you challenged me. A lot of the conversations we had and, uh, at the end of the day, the challenges were, were, uh, were right on. You became counselor at some point in time, helping me when I get to a place where I'm not thinking of everything. And you help, you go, Jim, you haven't thought about this side of it. I really appreciate your, your thoughtfulness and your willingness to just say, hey, uh, a little pushback and, and go, you need to think about this, whatnot. Um, I think you've experienced, uh, a tremendous amount of growth as well. I, I, I look at where you were when you started and, and the confidence that you have at this point. This has been four years' experience for you. Not a long time, but you are, you are just very, uh, very confident in what you do and you've, you've, your missions and the things that you wanted to accomplish are registered here in Crystal and they'll be here for a very long time. So, uh, you will be missed. I'm glad to hear that you'll be back from time to time in town. Uh, we share another association where we see each other. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that, still continuing. But beyond that, we wish you luck in, in your fu- future endeavors and look forward to seeing you when you come back. So thank you for your commitment to, in service. Alright. Therese?
Um, I'd like to say I've learned a lot from both of you, Olga and Brendan. Um, I'm gonna miss you both. And I echo the other things that have been said here tonight. You know, happy holidays and keep in touch.
Go ahead David.
Um, just to say, um, thank you for, you know, taking time out of your lives to, you know, serve the community and being a public servant. It's been really great. And, um, my first couple of years in the council, I've learned a lot from both of you and really appreciate it. Our, our talks and our discussions and it's been really great. And, um, best of luck, uh, going forward and, uh, thanks for the last couple of years.
Alright, anyone else? Alright, that's, I'm gonna move on to announcements if you don't mind? Or did you want to say something?
Want to say something?
Yeah, I guess that makes a lot of sense. That makes a lot of sense.
Um, well, do you want to go first? I don't know. Is that a yes or a no?
I don't know.
I'll go first.
Um, wow. Um, first, I just want to say thank you to everybody, um, not just, uh, I mean, the council. It's kind of, I mean, it shifted a, a little bit, but, um, you know, I think of when it was, when it was Julie and now, now David. But, you know, I have appreciated all of you as peers, um, you know, for all of our conversations and more than others. But I think really at the end of the day, and I, I, I feel confident in knowing still where the, the direction that the council is going. That even if there's differences of opinions, the, um, the mission is still the, the same. And it's with, um, Crystal as a whole at, um, at the forefront, not personal ambition or, or drive. And, um, and I think for me, that's what I, when I get really passionate about, uh, local politics, you know, and that we keep it about, you know, the people and not getting parties and, you know, different ideologies in, involved. But what's best for Crystal? And the staff, you know, it has been, um, you guys make it, make us look really good. And so, um, I appreciate, you know, each and, each and every one of you, for those that may be listening or, or, or later. Um, I appreciate all of the citizens. Um, thank you for not trusting me, um, but trusting all of us. I think that's the beauty of our, our government, that we are entrusted not to, that we have some major, uh, authority or power, but that we're given the reins to really, our, our authority is in approving the finances. And, and being kind of the balances in making sure that the city staff is doing what they're supposed to be doing and setting forth the policy direction. Um, Crystal is a beautiful, diverse community. And, um, I, it is my hope that that continues to be pushed and, and talked about. You know, we have, um, I say it all the time, we have an amazing police department. And what I share with any and everybody, even in my journeys throughout the country, is that, um, we don't have a, every police department in this whole country has a community policing policy. And I commend the chief all the time because there's a difference between having a policy and having a practice. And, um, our police department puts that in practice. And, um, we have, you know, great parks, great public services, um, with the, uh, pub, the public works. You know, even when people complain about the streets not getting plowed, um, we have great city services. And we don't, you know, we're almost debt free. And we, even though the taxes have gone up, our taxes are still cheaper than, um, than pretty much everywhere else around us. And that, that's a testament to all of the hard work from not just the council, but the staff. And so, um, it has been one of my highest honors and this is very bittersweet. And I didn't think I would get a little emotional and I've been, I've been this whole time. So, um, thank you, um, to everyone, um, and, and keep pushing towards working together. And that, you know, there are people who even though they don't speak up, um, you know, that we're thinking about them. That we're trying to include everybody in what's best for us as a whole, not just the far right and far left that tend to be the loudest, but the eighty percent that's in the middle that just want to, you know, live their, live their lives and that we continue to work together. So thank you.
Thank you. Olga?
I, I wasn't going to say anything until, um, so I, I just really want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Um, I am extremely emotional. So, um, I think to follow up on Brendan's point, you can have a policy. Uh, and that's one thing, but you can have a culture. And I think Crystal really has a culture of service, um, that is at the forefront of what you guys do as staff and, um, what we do, um, what we've tried to do on, on the council. So I, um, trust it will continue as the council goes forward. But I know that for you, um, staff, you guys, that's, is, that is the foundation that I, I believe is just natural. So, um, I've seen that over the last eight years and it's been greatly humbling, um, and an incredible honor to be a part of this, uh, part of what you do. Um, so I just want to thank each and every one of you, um, very deeply. It's been an amazing experience. So for me and my family, yeah. And I'm incredibly proud to live in Crystal. We, we purchased our house here right at the tippy top of the, the bubble, the last bubble. And, and kind of got stuck here, quote unquote, um, which it ended up being the biggest blessing of our lives. So, and, and we're going to continue living here. And, um, so I'm just really honored to have been a part of this. So thank you.
Alright, thank you guys for your comments. Appreciate it. We do have a few announcements I'm gonna read into the record at this time. Uh, offices for the city will be closed Monday, December twenty-sixth in observation of Christmas Day holidays. Uh, city offices will also be closed Monday, January second in observation of the New Year's Day holiday. Uh, our next regular Crystal Council meeting will be Tuesday, January third at seven PM here at City Hall in the council chambers. Uh, city council meetings and work sessions are open to the public. Uh, current and previous meetings are available for viewing or listening at our website, crystalmn.gov. Um, other announcements, any? Nancy?
This might be one for Mark, given the snow. What is, what are they calling this now? Winter weather watch? Or has it changed since five o'clock?
So technically we're, we're under a winter storm warning, I believe, starting at nine AM tomorrow.
Oh, it's a warning now?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, wow. Okay. So what's happening with city plows and things?
We have plows here? No, um, so the snow's not supposed to start till late morning tomorrow. It's actually getting five inches of snow throughout the course of the day. So what you'll probably see is whenever we get about a half inch of snow, we'll put out trucks for mains and hills, probably scale it up a little bit in the afternoon. The big thing is for people. You know, my kid's school's already called an hour early tomorrow. The afternoon commute's gonna be challenging. I think the morning's gonna be pretty boring. I wouldn't worry about it. Maybe some black ice. Um.
Just black ice.
Just black ice. So basically on bridges, just, you know.
Standard winter.
Um, and then depending on how it goes tomorrow, we'll, we'll probably do snow parking restrictions Thursday morning for a two AM start. Um, if the snow goes as late as they forecast into the evening tomorrow night.
Okay, cool.
And then it's gonna get wicked cold. So if we don't clean it up, we are in some trouble.
Yeah, kinda like last one.
Thank you, Mark. And I promise I'm gonna make pit cells this weekend. Tell Brian I'll be stopping by with some for you guys.
I will definitely not tell him that. It'll pretty surprise us.
And then if I could, can I ask the chief reverend to come up and ask about Toys for Tots? How did that go?
I'll tell you that both Toys for Tots and Shop with a Cop were a success. Uh, last night we had Shop with a Cop and had twenty-two different families that we celebrated with the city of Robinsdale Police Department. And our cops were up at our outreach office in the bitter cold, traveling back and forth to Target. So it was a great event. And then, uh, Toys for Tots actually over, I think I heard this morning over, gotta get this right now. Almost a hundred and fifty police agencies came down. Um, two of them were on the border of Minnesota and Wisconsin. And so we had quite a number of police presence going over to Care Eleven. So great success.
That's great. Thank you.
Awesome. Alright, any other announcements? Alright, then, um, just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, uh, and we'll look forward to seeing you next year. Uh, looking for a motion from Olga?
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Brendan?
Jumping in there?
Not, not tonight. Are you okay?
Yeah, I was okay.
Tweaking out.
I suck at that motion.
We have a motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay?
Nay.
Motion here. Oh, roll call. Roll call.
Did it again.
Yes.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay. Councilmember Parsons?
Aye.
Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember Banks?
Nay.
Councilmember Budishevsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
I just had to. That was my last one.
Good for you.
I don't blame you.
Reporting stopped.